Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We were just meeting in closed session to discuss a couple of items related to property negotiations. One was the North Block District public parking supply and also to do with Mile Square. So, Mr. Clerk, I'll ask for a motion to rise from committee of the whole closed session with reporting.
It's moved by councillor Allen, seconded by councillor Kandit. Then council rise from committee of the whole closed meeting that the rules of file 2010-1 be waived in the chair report.
So we'll call the question. And that carries.
So it's moved by councillor George, seconded by councillor Bohm, that council directs staff to enter into discussions with Homestead Land Holdings Limited to explore the incorporation of approximately 400 public parking spaces as part of developments in Block 3 and Block 5 of the North Block District and report back to council with details for consideration.
Still waiting for one person? Still two people? If you can please vote again. There we go. And that carries. Next, we have the approval of the addits. Can I get a mover? Moved by councillor Sanick, seconded by councillor Neal. To approve the addits, we have a couple of motions of condolences and a motion of congratulations. And that carries. Next, are there any disclosures of potential pecuniary interest? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to presentations. We have one presentation this evening. Corey Abrams, President of Kingston and District Sports Hall of Fame, will present the inductees for 2015. Ms. Abrams.
Mayor Patterson, members of council and guests. On behalf of the Board of Directors, it is my honour to present the list of five inductees who will formally become members of the Kingston and District Sports Hall of Fame at the 20th Annual Dinner to be held at Our Lady of Fatima Parish Friday, May 1, 2015. I would like to publicly acknowledge and thank the members of the selection committee for all their hard work resulting in this list of five. The names will be read alphabetically, and as they are unveiled, we ask the inductee or their representative to please stand while the bio is read. To save time, please hold applause until all are introduced. Jack Aldridge Builder. Born in Toronto in 1941, Jack has been a resident of Kingston since 1961. During his teaching career with the Frontenac County Board of Education and later the Limestone District School Board, Jack coached football, basketball, rugby, soccer and track. Along with his full slate of coaching and teaching responsibilities, Jack served as president of the County of Frontenac Secondary School Athletics Association for seven years, president of the Eastern Ontario Secondary School Athletic Association for eight years, along with the four-year term as Chair of the Athletic Directors Association, and he coached in the Pacers Basketball League. In 1992, Jack founded the North Kingston Basketball Camp. For the next 14 years, Jack was director, head coach and fundraiser for this affordable summer basketball camp. A tireless volunteer and motivator, Jack has spent his life helping others on athletic fields and in gyms, as well as fundraising for many charities. Dawn Denis Builder. Dawn has been an outstanding contributor to local baseball programs and was responsible for changing the face of the game in Kingston. In 1988, Dawn coached his son and became a member of the KBA Board in 1989. In 1993, he served as president for 10 years. Dawn was instrumental in establishing All-Star teams to represent Kingston in the Eastern Ontario Baseball Association and brought travel teams back to our area during his time on the KBA Board. During his time with KBA, the Kingston Braves won five Eastern Ontario Championships and two All-Ontario Championships. Under his watch, several new diamonds were built while existing ones were refurbished. Dawn assisted with designing and building two diamonds at First Avenue and Veterans Field and restored baseball diamonds on Third and Fourth Avenue, McGavin Park and the cricket field. In 1994, he brought the legends of baseball to Kingston. Jenny Ellis, athlete tennis, golf, squash. Jenny is a multi-sport athlete, excelling in tennis, golf, squash during her career. In tennis, she won the initial Jack Campbell Memorial Medal in both singles and doubles in 1979, won both titles again in 1980, '82, '85, '86, '87 and '89. She won the ladies' doubles title at the Kingston Tennis World in 1982 and was the runner-up in 1983, '84 and '85. In 1985, Jenny won the Eastern Ontario Mixed Doubles Title and represented Eastern Ontario in the Canadian Championships in Montreal. In squash, Jenny established an inter-club women's squash league that ran for 10 years with teams from Queen's, Brockville, the Kingston YMCA and RMC. Jenny began golfing in her 30s. She was the Garrison Club Champion in 1990, '91, '92, '95, 2010 and 2012. Jenny was the district amateur champion in 1994 and senior champion in 1996 and '99 and from 2001 to 2005. She won the over-age 60 championship in 2004, 2005, 2006 and 2011. During her career, Jenny has recorded 10 holes in one. In 2008, Jenny received a volunteer award from the Ontario Golf Association. George Richardson, athlete hockey. Born in 1886, George received his early education at private schools in Kingston. His reputation as an outstanding juvenile hockey player recruited him immediately for Queen's University senior teams. In 1903, George played both wings and captained the team of the Intercollegiate Championship of America. In his debut with Queen's, he scored five goals against Yale University. From 1904 to 1906, he continued as team captain when the team won the Intercollegiate Hockey Union Championship. After graduation in 1906, he was a Kingston-Frontenac's player and president and played in the Stanley Cup Challenge. His hockey career continued with the 14th Regiment, the Princes of Wales Owns Rifles, where he was the OHA finalist in 1907, 1908 and '09. In 1908, the final Kingston team beat Stratford on home ice and then beat Stratford 9-7 in the deciding game with Richardson scoring seven of the goals. In 1909, he played on the Allen Cup Championship Team. In 1911 and '12, he played right wing for the Kingston-Frontenac's in the OHA Senior Division. The undefeated team in regular season lost in the championship to Toronto. On March 17, 1916, he was posthumously awarded the Legion of Honour and in 1950, he was inducted into the International Hockey Hall of Fame and the Richardson Stadium was named after him. Bob Storing is represented by his widow, Anne. Bob Storing, athlete fastball. Born in 1958, Bob lived in Inverry until 1981, when he moved to Kingston. An imposing figure at 6'3" and 260 pounds, Big Bob was one of the most dominant right-handed fastball pitchers to ever play in this area. He pitched for a number of teams over the years, including 10 in the Ottawa area, and he was often asked to be the gun-for-hire for tournament play. A list of his accomplishments includes midget championships in 1972 and 1973. In 1978, Bob had the most wins with the Lowborough Fastball League and was named the MVP of the championship team. He was the best pitcher in both Elgin and Sealy's Bay tournaments. In 1990 and '92, Bob was Circle Fastball League All-Star, named Best Pitcher, MVP Pitcher and Playoff MVP. In 1986, Bob won a provincial fastball championship. In 1997, the second last year of his career, Bob had a steady string of one, two and three hitters with strikeouts almost seemingly to be in the dozens to 15 range per game, topping out a remarkable 20-game strikeouts in a game. Through the 1990s, Bob remained among the top pitchers of his generation, throwing low-hit, high-strikeout games, playing in the Canadian Championships and at the International Softball Congress World Champions. Mayor Patterson and members of council, there you have the newest members into the Kingston District Sports Hall of Fame. The illustrious group now becomes 153. And once again, we thank you so much for this public unveiling and letting us use this forum to present the latest inductees. And we now ask that the inductees and their family members and the board stand and we will exit back to Memorial Hall. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much for that. So, moving on, we have no delegations tonight. We have no briefings. Are there any petitions to present? Okay, seeing none, we have several motions. First of all, motions of condolence. Moved by Mayor Patterson, seconded by Deputy Mayor Neal, that the condolences of Kingston City Council be extended to John Bolignoni, city clerk, on the passing of his father, Antonio Bolignoni, on December 26, 2014. Our thoughts are with John and his family during this difficult time. Moved by councillor George, seconded by councillor Osannick, that the condolences of Kingston City Council be extended to the family of Douglas Warden, former City of Kingston Property Standards bylaw officer and Kingston City Council courier, on his passing December 29, 2014. Our thoughts and prayers are with his family at this difficult time. Moved by Mayor Patterson, seconded by Deputy Mayor Neal, that the condolences of Kingston City Council be extended to the family and friends of David Ruttenberg, who passed away in December 2014. David, Professor Emeritus at Queen's University, was active in the Kingston community as a board member of KEDCO and coordinator of the McBurney Park Neighborhood Association. His passing is a great loss for our community. Our thoughts are with his family during this difficult time. Motion of congratulations, moved by Mayor Patterson, seconded by councillor Osannick, that the congratulations of Kingston City Council be extended to Kingston-Frontenac's player Lawson Kraus for Team Canada's gold medal victory at the IIHF World Junior Hockey Championships on January 5, 2015. So with that, we will call the question. Please vote. One person still to vote. And that carries unanimously. There are no deferred motions. So, report number five from the Chief Administrative Officer.
It's moved by councillor Shell, seconded by councillor Turner, that report number five from the Chief Administrative Officer consent be received and adopted.
There are a number of clauses, clauses A through F. Would anyone like any of the clauses separated? Seeing none, we will vote on them as a whole. Item A is a request for commemorative plaque in Navy Memorial Park, 70th anniversary of the Battle of the Atlantic. Item B is a ward of contract municipal energy planning project. Item C is a consultant selection and award of contract for cultural heritage property evaluation and conservation project. Item D is a 2015 interim tax levy. Item E is a 2015 municipal borrowing bylaw. And item F is a consultant selection and award of contract for five-year update for official plan and comprehensive zoning bylaw. So with that, Mr. Clerk, we'll call the question. And that carries. Report number six from the Administrative Policies Committee.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. It is my pleasure to introduce this report of the first Administrative Policies Committee meeting of this council's term.
It's moved by councillor Stroud, seconded by councillor Bohm, that the report number six from the Administrative Policies Committee be received and adopted.
There are two clauses. Would anyone like either of them separated? Councillor McLaren. B, so we'll vote on them individually. Item A is amendments to bylaw 2005-100, a bylaw for prescribing standards for the maintenance and occupancy of property within the city of Kingston. That carries, but that's not the right item A. Oh, that is there. So we have the item A on this screen. That's actually from the previous report. Just watching that. Okay, item B is the park refreshment vehicle policy. So anyone like to speak to this? Councillor McLaren.
Thank you. I've been approached by some members of my constituency who actually work in this industry and they have expressed some concerns regarding the renewal of the annual refreshment vehicle permits, specifically clause 6.5. The city shall notify annual refreshment vehicle permit applications regarding the status of their application. I'm, first of all, curious if there is a problem with a competitor being more... or meeting the requirements closer than the existing one. Will they be allowed... will the existing permit holder be allowed to upgrade their vehicles in time to continue their business?
Commissioner Hurdle.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Maybe just a bit of clarification, the permit holders are actually holding permits for only one year currently. So there is no such thing as I have an ongoing permanent permit and now I'm going to lose my permanent permit. We do renew them on a yearly basis and it's based on first come, first served currently. So, somebody that currently has a permit doesn't mean that they would have one next year. It all depends on, obviously, who comes forward and when they do. The intent of the policy and the reason why it's not being implemented until next year is to give time for all vendors to review the policy and work with staff to look at what will be the criteria and what we will be putting emphasis on so that if they're looking at making some changes to their menus, they do have time to do that. The changes to the vehicles will not be necessarily required unless they change their menu and require changes to their vehicle to provide that food service, but we are not going to look at for changes to their vehicle per se, but rather what they're going to be offering from a menu perspective as far as healthy foods, local organic food, those kinds of things are going to be part of the criteria. So will accessibility. So there will be a number of things that we will be looking at for the vendors. And those only apply to vendors within parks that are located in parks and not on street vendors where we do have food trucks, for example, on street. That policy does not impact any of those vendors on street with food trucks.
Thank you. My concern was more that if an outside vendor were to come in with better qualifications and ambush the existing local provider, would they be able to in any way adjust on short notice and not be forced out of their current position?
Commissioner Hurdle.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So we recognize that all vendors are businesses, right? So they're not non-for-profit organizations. We do recognize that that's their business and we can't prioritize one business over another. We do not have the ability to do that in terms of giving priority to certain businesses because it could be, obviously, a form of bonusing and we can't do that. So we would definitely work, like I indicated, with all vendors that may be concerned in terms, I'm assuming it would be more in terms of the menu that they currently provide. And if they were looking at making some changes and providing more healthy options, we would definitely work with those vendors. We do want to encourage more healthy options for the public to have access to and not necessarily just looking at the standard and what's been provided in the past. And that's reflective as well of the healthy food policies that was approved a few years ago for our recreational facilities. So that's following in the same line. So yes, we would work with those. We would not be able to necessarily ensure that they would have a location depending on what location they would prefer, but we would definitely work with them to see how they can best adjust their menu to be more competitive.
Councillor McLaren, do you have any other questions?
No, that'll be all. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? Councillor Osannick.
Thank you, your worship. Just two questions and for Commissioner Hurdle through you. For the nine parks that are being selected for the food trucks, would it be one truck per park or would some parks have multiple trucks?
Mr. Folbell.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Some parks of the nine listed have up to two trucks. Some have one and some have zero. An example of zero would be out front in Confederation Basin, where we're just proposing the cart type of smaller vending unit.
Thank you very much. And my second question is, so after this policy gets approved, we're going to be advertising it in the newspaper for comments so that everyone, if they want to be a vendor, will know about it? Or what are the next steps? Just because we haven't received a lot of public comment, I know councillor McLaren said that he received comments, but I'm surprised that we haven't received comments. So that's why I just wondered what the next steps are for advertising after this.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So we will continue to update the city's website, social media with the policy if it is approved at council this evening. We'll be creating frequently asked questions so that potential vendors can understand the type of criteria that we're looking for in this new policy. And we will post the locations, the type of location in those parks and outline the anticipated timing, when applications will be due, the review process and the award of those locations for 2016.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? Councillor Stroud.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. I would request the support of this policy from my fellow council members as it is an important next step to offering a greater variety of choices to folks so that we can ensure, you know, that the green spaces are enjoyed, you know, and offering people, giving them an incentive to get out, get some exercise and enjoy their city. Thank you.
Thank you. So with that, we will call the question. Please, please vote. And that carries. Report number seven from the Arts Recreation and Community Policies Committee. Who... Who has report number seven? Councillor Hudson.
That's what happens when you actually think about things around here. So it's my pleasure to present the report number seven from the Arts Recreation Community Policies Committee for consideration by city council. Thank you.
It's moved by councillor Hudson, seconded by councillor Osannick, that report number seven of the Arts Recreation and Community Policies be received and adopted.
There are two clauses. Clause A is a municipal fee assistance program, 2014 summary and changes for 2015. Clause B is a report from the Arts Advisory Committee, a report card. Would anyone like other of these items separated? Okay, seeing none, we will vote on them as a whole. And that's carried. Report number eight from the Environment Infrastructure and Transportation Policies Committee.
Hello. It's my pleasure to submit report number eight from EITP. Duly moved and seconded. Thank you.
It's moved by councillor Neal, seconded by councillor Allen, that report number eight from the Environment Infrastructure and Transportation Policies Committee be received and adopted.
So there are two clauses. Clause A is the winner control report. Clause B is the streets alive route. Would anyone like either of these items separated? Seeing none, we will vote on them as a whole. Please vote. And that carries. Report number nine from the Municipal Accessibility Advisory Committee. Who has report number nine from... All right, we found it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It is my pleasure to introduce the report from the Municipal Accessibility Advisory Committee. It's been moved and seconded and I move that it be adopted.
It's moved by councillor Holland, seconded by councillor Turner, that report number nine from the Municipal Accessibility Advisory Committee be received and adopted.
So there's just the one clause, the annual review of facility accessibility design standards. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, we will call the question. And that carries. We have nothing from committee of the whole. We have one information report that is in relation to the 2014 Municipal Election Accessibility Plan. Are there any questions? We have no information reports from members of council, miscellaneous business. We have one motion that, as requested by Probus Kingston, council proclaim March 2015 as Probus Month in the city of Kingston. Can I have a mover? Moved by councillor George, seconded by councillor Osannick. And that carries. On to new motions. We have two new motions. Motion number one, moved by councillor Osannick, seconded by councillor Kandon. Whereas the Association of Municipalities of Ontario is seeking nominations to their Board of Directors to fill vacancies left by the recent October 2014 municipal election, nominations must be received by January 16, 2015. And whereas nominations to the AMO Board must be supported by a council motion which indicates the financial support of that council, and whereas the city of Kingston has benefited from previous council representation on this municipal association board under former councillor Bill Glover and most recently former mayor Mark Garretson, therefore be resolved that the council of the city of Kingston nominates councillor Kevin George for election to the Board of the Association. The Municipalities of Ontario is a member of the Large Urban Caucus until August 2016 and that the city of Kingston agrees to cover the travel expenses related to attending meetings. Is there anybody that would like to speak to this? Councillor Osannick. Counsel Ossanik?
Thank you, your worship. Along with Counselor Neil, it's, you know, Counselor George has many, many years of municipal experience. I don't know who has the most number, but I'm very happy, okay, there you go, Counselor George, so I'm very happy to support him to be our representative at AMO. Thank you.
Thank you very much. It's certainly excellent to have a council representative at AMO to keep us updated on some of the advocacy work that all municipalities are working on together in terms of lobbying the province, so that's great. If there are no other questions or comments, we will call the question. Please vote. And that carries. Motion number two, moved by Counsel Neil, seconded by Counsel Holland. Whereas Kingston is well-known for its many successful and talented musicians of all genres, as well as many successful producers and studio engineers, and whereas the city of Ottawa has adopted a very successful policy of playing only local musicians on all their call waiting and public municipal properties' background music, including arenas, thereby supporting local musicians, therefore be it resolved that the city of Kingston explore adopting a similar policy to be facilitated by our cultural services and communications departments in collaboration with Kingston musicians, and that a report with recommendations be brought to the Arts Advisory Committee no later than the end of Q2 2015 for the future consideration of council. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this? Counsel Neil?
Yes. I am very, very thankful to a local musician who forwarded me a link to a newspaper article that described the Ottawa program. And I think it's an excellent, excellent program. It both encourages and recognizes local talent, and it gives exposure and an ability for people in Kingston to also be able to recognize and appreciate that. There are clearly going to be some logistical issues. I had a good conversation with the Director of Cultural Services, and clearly, we'll need to do things like explore how we go about royalties or getting waiver of royalties and that. There's been quite an outpouring on Facebook by musicians who are very supportive of this, who are already saying that they'd be happy to volunteer, to become engaged in this process. I've spoken to staff. I believe that our request that a report with recommendations for the end of Q2, going through the appropriate committee, which would be the Arts Advisory Committee, makes perfect sense. It's interesting, because in my experience, being involved with the Arts Advisory Committee and being involved in the grant programs, I think we do a very good job with performing arts, with the theater groups, with other arts groups. The interesting thing, and I can say this as a former spouse of a professional musician, it really is a kind of private entrepreneurial job that many of them have, and they don't work necessarily with, other than the Musicians Union, in a kind of constant collaborative way. So this gives them that opportunity. We have one of the best symphonies in Ontario, if not in Canada, for a city our size. We have lots of renowned musicians, and unlike, OneWag said to me on Facebook, "This won't be the Tragically Hip 24-Hour Show." We have tons of very, very talented musicians of every variety, and I think this is a great opportunity for us to recognize and applaud them. So I'm hopeful that this will pass, and I'm looking forward to the, to the report coming forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on my list is Counsel Allen.
Thank you, through you, your worship, and thank you, Counsel Neil, for bringing this wonderful motion. I just, I wanted to ask a few logistical questions before we got to the point of, do we go about this? And if staff could just help me out on this, when we're looking at our phone system, is that, is our phone system currently capable of playing music in the background? I know that some of them are beeps, and that there's the voice recognizing system as well. I also wanted to know if, if we have any idea if there's a cost associated with that upfront. I know we might be researching that in the report, and that's what we're asking for, but if we know right now, we can make a decision about that.
So is there any, anyone from staff that wants to provide some, yes, Mr. Wiggington?
Through you, your worship. Given the fact that this motion's just come forward, there's been some cursory discussion amongst staff as to some of these different elements, and I have been told by IS&amp;T, our information services and technology group, that our phone system, as it currently stands, can handle this kind of delivery of content. So we'd obviously have to look at the more technical aspects, but it certainly looks possible.
Commissioner Beach?
I just want to comment on the cost estimates. In staff, when there's a motion that comes forward, we don't actually undertake the research and come back with the information on the night where council considers this. So in terms of the longer-term costs, if council approves the motion, then we'll provide a staff report that comes back.
All right, thank you. That's all for me. I just wanted to make sure that we weren't going to have to go into an ITS overhaul in order to make this happen. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Counsel Stroud?
Thank you, your worship. My question to staff adds more to do, not with the technical aspect, but with the actual process of choosing the music itself. Essentially, that's the role of the DJ in a radio station, for example. I know that it's a fairly complex job, and do we have any experienced DJs on city staff currently? That would be one question. And the other one would be, what, what would be done, I guess this is something we still have to look at, to ensure that all music types are actually selected? Because, you know, that would, you'd end up getting the tragically hip, but you might be followed by some Tchaikovsky, and then to some country music, and to some grunge or something like that, because they're all local music. So the DJ's role would be very important, and I just wonder how we'd go about selecting that person.
So I think that those are all really good questions, but I think that these are the sorts of questions that would be investigated by the report. So what this motion is doing is asking whether we want staff to go and investigate all of these details. And so if we vote yes, then I think that the appropriate time would then be when it comes back to Arts Advisory and then to ARC to then explore those details. Because I don't think it's fair to put staff on the spot now to talk about how many DJs we have, and, you know, not that's not interesting, but just to give them a bit of...
But can I just have them tell me if there is a DJ on staff?
Who, who, Mr. Beach, do we have a DJ on staff?
I think we have a former mayor that used to spin some vinyl, but we actually do have some experienced staff, but we don't hire them for that. So we'd have to actually look at a curated process for this.
Very good. Okay, next on my list is Counsel Holland.
Thank you, your worship. I just would like to comment on the value of this motion in terms of what it has to offer us as a city. I think that's sort of the question that we might be considering at this point, what will we gain? Encouraging local musicians to, by presenting their work, I think is something that will have not just local, but national and international recognition of Kingston as being a place that is very welcoming to artists, and that we value the arts community and that we work hard to create that and sustain it. We, so I think it works full circle. We end up encouraging local musicians in their work. We entice them to come and live and work in the city by showing this level of support. And artists that I've spoken to have played all throughout the city in various venues, some for essentially no pay or limited pay in terms of cover that they receive. They contribute quite a lot to the, to the character of our city, and I think this is a really interesting, novel way to recognize that. And as I say, in so doing, we will benefit by having the recognition, and hopefully more and more artists recognizing this city as a place that it's wonderful to live and work, and continually improving our culture and quality of life. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Ossanik?
Thank you, your worship. A concern I had or I heard from the public is that if the city does adopt closely Ottawa's policy that involves arenas, then what would happen to the sports games at the K-Rock Center, for example? You have the Kingston Froninax, and they always like to skate out to AC/DC if you want blood. And so I just want to, I talked to the mover about this at lunchtime today. I just wanted to ask staff to confirm when they prepare the staff report, if they could have exemptions in there where, you know, this, you know, the Kingston music policy wouldn't apply under some circumstances, like sporting games.
So I think the question is, would staff take considerations like that into account in preparing the report? So, I think, Mr. Wiggington is nodding at us, so I think that that's fair to say we can, we can keep AC/DC, that's, that won't be a problem. Good. Counsel Neil, you have the right to reserve to speak last. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak? Counsel Neil?
Yes, thank you. I am very proud to bring this motion forward. I, in addressing the concern about the selection process, I think the biggest risk for us as elected officials is we don't want a lot of phone calls from musicians saying, "How come my music isn't being played?" And that's why, in other arts, support measures that we've taken, we've always asked for a group of volunteers from the community, so that there's an arms-length relationship, and that decisions are being made not by constituents nagging at us that they want a little bit more playtime on, on this, on some of these. So I think, but I think we already have a model for that in the way that we, we do arts funding in the city. And although it isn't part of the motion, I always just assumed that that would be part of the report that would come back to us. I tweeted something that often gets retweeted, and it's, it's the harsh reality. A musician is somebody who has $5,000 worth of equipment, a $500 car, and will drive 50 miles for a $100 gig. So that's the harsh reality of being a musician, and anything that we can do to give them additional exposure and a leg up, I think, is a valuable thing. So I'm hopeful that this may even pass unanimously. We've been a unanimous group all night, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So with that, we will call the question. Mr. Clerk? Are there any notices of motion tonight? We have no minutes, we have tabling of documents, number of communications. Is there any other business? It is 8:17. So that is a great way to start the new year. I'm sure that all of our meetings in 2015 will be that short. But with that, I will ask for a motion to adjourn. Oh, bylaws! So I was so excited to get out of here. Okay, we have to be here for a couple more minutes. Never mind. Mr. Clerk, bylaws.
So it's moved by Counsel Turner, seconded by Counsel Stroud. That bylaws 1, 4, 7 through 9 be given their first and second reading.
Please vote.
It's moved by Counsel Shell, seconded by Counsel Ossanik. That clause 11.34 of bylaw 2010-1 be suspended for the purpose of giving bylaws 4, 7, and 8 three readings.
Please vote. One person still to vote. And that carries.
And it's moved by Counsel Neil, seconded by Counsel McLaren. That bylaws 2 through 5 and 7 through 9 be given their third reading.
Please vote. Motion to adjourn. Moved by Counsel Turner, seconded by Counsel Hutchinson. Please vote. And we are adjourned. Thank you very much.